I'm gonna do a roll call. So we do, Mr. Burris.
President.
Mr. Pope.
President.
Mr. Lucas.
Chair.
Mr. Byrne.
President.
Chairman. If y'all would. I'm gonna ask Mr. Burris if he would and lead us in the prayer.
His father, but thank you, Lord, for this day. We ask God you will bless us if we deliberate the business of this county. We ask God that you will just continue to bless all the citizens and inhabitants of Waycross from Ware County. And we thank you, Lord, for Jesus Christ down for our sins, and we pray God you will just bless us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any guest speaker? We don't have no guest speaker today. Okay. Our agenda is the resolution for 2022-06 designation or courthouse annex. Now, you know that. Would you explain that to us, please, Nick? What what this is all about? Do you know about it?
I do. So Scott had, I think, drafted this, and essentially what it's trying to do is is allow this building to serve as a courthouse annex so court can be held here. And and that's all it is. I believe the judges have agreed with this and consented to it. And so it's just needs to be executed by the county.
Okay. Can you explain to us the email that we received from your office that this is in?
So it's a it's a there's a statute for for courthouse annexes for if the courthouse is in the unincorporated area and then there's a statute for relocating courtroom activities or something like that. So it's it's a mere citation issue referencing the right statute. So so if you want us to look at that and and we can check fix that, we can do that.
So Georgia code, am I right if I'm trying to quote it? That a courthouse in order to have an annex must be courthouse must be located in an unincorporated area of a county?
Yes, sir. Under under that 15-6-17 that we're relying on. But if you look at 15-6-18, it talks about courtroom holding a court session in in a in a other place, just not called an annex. So so the verbiage is different.
So we would not declare this an annex?
It depends. You know, we're okay with with you doing that, you know, we or we'll, you know, look into it and correct the verbiage and next meeting, we can do the the same resolution.
How can you correct the verbiage on a state statute?
Oh, sorry. I would correct the verbiage on this resolution.
Did we ask the judges to explain their need? Can y'all explain it to us? I mean, what y'all want or unless if we can?
Yeah.
Yeah, come up to my place.
Thank you for letting us appear here with this request. Joining me is the Chief Judge of Waycross Judicial Circuit. You may or may not know that we've been struggling next door with the space requirements for quite some time. But what has happened recently, I'm sure you're aware, the state has awarded certain ARPA funds, and they have to the judiciary also with the idea that we need to catch up the pending backlog, primarily criminal backlog with an emphasis emphasis on serious violent felonies. So that courthouse was pretty much when it was built, was it was one judge at the time, if I heard correctly. Well, there's four of us, state court judges, and I don't know who else might be using it. I know DA's office does for grand jury proceedings, that sort of thing. So we were tripping over ourselves trying to schedule hearings, trials, space issues. Part of ARPA, though, is we're able to bring in senior judges to either take some of our civil load or take criminal trials themselves. And so there's another, that's the real rub right there, the biggest. I mean, this goes back many years, many issues. But we found ourselves, I have two colleagues, I'm not a trial judge this cycle, in Ware County, but Judge Scott handles criminal load, Judge Brooks handles the civil load, they're both here. And they can flesh this out more about what they're going through, but it's a space issue to hold hearings and trials. We, back into talking with Scott, and we were wondering about a room, not the whole building, but if you all had a room that we could use to take some of the load, some of the time, it would be great. It would take a resolution to annex. I don't know if you can add a room or not, but that's what we were needing, and Scott suggested we appear here today to explain the need to you. I'll answer any question you may have, but I know Judge Scott, we were in another meeting earlier, he grabbed his calendar. He'd be happy to share that with you and tell you some of the issues. But as we plow forward, trying to deal with the backlogs, these issues are going to grow. The DA's office is in the process of trying to ramp up with some personnel that they were awarded through those funds. And as they ramp up, that need is just going to continue to grow as we add on more cases, more trials, and that sort of thing. By way of information of our six counties in the circuit, Coffey and Ware have the overwhelming majority of backlog cases that are still pending. And Coffey and Ware have the greatest number of serious violent felonies that are pending. So that's our task from the Chief Justice and from the governor is to deploy these funds in a way that we eliminate as much backlog as possible. It's going to go on at least two years and possibly three. But with that, I'll answer any question I can that you may have, or I will let either one of my judges speak.
Can we annex one room?
I do not know the answer to that, but I I know that other counties have, you know, the same situation of a building right next to the courthouse and it and it's used as a courtroom. So we can for sure figure out how to do it one way or the other.
Oh, yeah. Well, see, I was thinking about it when Scott was telling me that if we annex or let them, would we have to close one end of the building and then they'd have to put security and all in there to, would it, you know, in the doors like we do at the courthouses? I mean, it would affect all of everybody coming in and out the building too? Or would that the judge might know about that?
Sheriff is in charge of security wherever courts held, so it would be up for him first of all to decide what level of security. But there is an idea that that I was just coming to, shooting from the hip. We would have no problem having anyone that y'all let appear over here go through security at the front door or back door and then divert over this way.
Okay. You got anything on it?
Couple of questions.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, appreciate you all coming, and a couple of questions you have already answered that I had written down. As far as the the different type trial, would these be like jury trials or?
We might could we might could hold a civil jury trial. Our thoughts is to not bring felons over. Don't hold criminal court over here and just get relieved to hold civil hearings, possibly a civil trial, and the grand jury is actually using the big court rooms when they need, and that takes up some space. So if you find a place for us in any room, we'd like for the grand jury to be able to use it. They only meet once a month, and that would be a big plus there too. The DA's office always meets with the grand jurors, so no criminal. We wouldn't want to bring criminals over here. It brings up another security issue.
I guess, and like I said, we just got this when we got our packet, and then we got this email today. And as far as the space, I know we do have, you know, room over here to accommodate some of that nature. But I guess my first question, and this would be to the attorney, is can we do it?
We can make it work. Yes.
Can can we do this without violating any state statutes that are already in existence, you know, about the courthouse having to be in the unincorporated area in order to have an annex?
So I believe the statute that that's referenced, we could not do it under that one perhaps, but we could work it out elsewhere. With that being said, with that with the caveat of, you know, with COVID and and the ARPA funds, it's it's just not, you know, the the law has not envisioned those funds, you know, and and COVID. So some of the things that might have worked previously don't work exactly under under that law. There's almost like a emergency problem, you could say. So I could totally see that you may interpret this statute differently under the the COVID emergency in ARPA funds than you would regularly. But like I said, I think we could, we would figure it out. It it just may take a another meeting.
Okay, and just get us, so right now you envision this being maybe like two to three years, you're saying, to try to get kind of caught up?
The ARPA fund or program is three individual one-year segments. We have to apply once every year. So assuming that we were awarded, it could go for as much as three years. A lot of the judges' side of it is set. We're ready to go. We have senior judges to help take some of the load. It's the DA's office being able primarily to ramp up and and find employees, which is very hard at a base scale.
Which I know that that's been an issue about the backlog of cases because of COVID and with Melbourne, you know, over there. So what I'm saying, about three years, and you think you all will be back where you need to be?
We hope to be within two, but the program does run three.
Okay.
And our mandate is to get the backlog under control. So two to three years.
Okay. Well, I guess that's, Mr. Chairman, I would say that, okay, I'm just, and with the attorney, you know, find out first of all, like I say, what mechanism can we use to implement this if we can? And then try to address some of the concern, I think, somebody said about the security and things of that nature. And maybe if it's a way they come in instead of like through the front, maybe through the side door, whatever, you know, but all those things can be worked out. But the first thing we need to find out is, can we do it? And if we can, how can we go about doing it? Anybody else?
Y'all have access to the state courtroom, state court? Y'all use that?
And I know Judge Scott is running the criminal docket, and he's got a calendar and explains, he explains the conflicts with some of that. We all are really judging across the circuit, not just Ware and Coffey, but even in the other counties where maybe they don't really have a larger percentage of backlog or serious violent felonies. But in one, in Coffey County, we probably have the most courtrooms. We have two big ones. We have a small jury assembly room that doubles as a courtroom, and then two courtrooms at the jail. And there's just scheduling conflicts even there. So with just two like we got, we have courthouses with one, and that is a nightmare. They don't have a volume of backlog that's judging that everywhere.
Oh, yeah. Is a courtroom at the jail ever used, sir? Is a courtroom at the jail used?
Not by us. In Coffey.
Judge Bobby may have used it a time or two, maybe, but I'm not sure. Coffey, I'm sure is, but that's a big courtroom. That courtroom, Coffey probably.
It's the size. They have two courtrooms the size of this room.
This room, yeah. They're probably.
But the Ware County jail courtroom that we built twenty years ago is not used?
I I I know it is by state court song. Judge Bobby, when he was doing criminal, may have gone out there. I know it's not conducive to any kind of jury type stuff. Right, yeah, too too small.
The magistrates may use it.
Magistrates may use it for firsthand.
I don't have a problem, you know, y'all making a courtroom over here. I just don't want no metal detectors. Because I'd warrant my blessing to move over here where people would come and get car tags or pay a property tax or other business had to get their metal detectors.
And we've got a metal detector at the back door, and people could just come in the front door and be escorted over here. You know, you're not going to see that many on any one day on the civil side unless there was a jury trial. And you'd have jurors that would meet over there and be selected over there. So when that comes down, you're probably looking at twelve to fourteen individual jurors plus whatever observers and litigants there would be.
And most of yous, most of yous, plain civil heads, you don't have all that many people there anyway, as far as into audience. You might have your attorney and husband or wife getting the horse or something like that.
And we're keenly aware of this nice facility. We know what's needed, and that's just in us talking. We didn't want to. I wouldn't even bring a drug court over here because we do have people in chains and dressed out occasionally. And we wouldn't bring a criminal court here. We wouldn't propose to do that.
Is there a door that we wouldn't, that would have to come that, there's not no door to that room? Side doors, it goes into that room.
You'd have to come in that.
You have to come in through that room. What kind of expense are we looking at to make a courtroom out of it?
Judge Scott, can you speak with that? Sure. Thank you. I don't have any dollar figure. Now, here's what we did take, tried to do for you. Those are very good questions. Is we we met with primarily the space we were looking at that we think would probably just be most conducive is as you walk in, I believe, I guess it'd be from the west side, but where the DA, where your parking lot is, where DA's office is, as you walk in, there's a room right to the right. I'm not sure what you call it. Is it a?
I think it's the board, tax assessor board.
Yeah.
It's right there, and our thought was, it's easy access from the courthouse. You're walking right in the door, right into the room. I I can envision, and and I I would think we could all make the profit to you that we don't anticipate using this whole building. You know, primarily that room and 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 when we thought it would be needed. So as expense wise, the room itself, fortunately, you can set up a courtroom pretty easily. We wouldn't come in and change any of your cabinetry or things like that. You can just set up tables and chairs. If you had to have a jury trial, you can just set it up with chairs, and you know, you'll just want something to kind of separate something, you know, cheaply you can make, probably get like a podium made and something for a witness stand. And then the main issue would be sound for the court court, very important to have a court court system and sound. But we're getting to work up on all that to give you that information of what that would cost. We think that'd be something. I I know the ARPA funds for the judiciary, we cannot use it for that. I don't know if the county would have any or whatever. But anyway, we're getting to work up on that cost, what it would cost to make that work. As far as the the anticipated need of security, very good question. We thought about that. I would think that we definitely would profit you to have any felony criminal over here. I just wouldn't do that. Whether it's drug court, it's just not conducive to that. Excuse me, but you know, the the sheriff is over courthouse security, so essentially they would be in charge of that. You would have some deputies and bailiffs, and they'd even have the handheld wands if you needed to, just go into the door to the room, not, you know, not where the public's coming in or not. But we, of course, obviously, we want to save for, you know, courtroom personnel in this building and public, et cetera. But we are working on the costs for 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 that. But that would be, what I just identified is really it, sound system for court court, and you know, maybe a witness stand, cabinetry, and a podium, and I don't know anything else you need over there. But we look at that, and you can, fortunately, chairs, you can space out where you need them. So you know, you're not looking at putting permanent fixtures or benches or anything like that.
Okay.
So so for the, I guess, to accommodate the judges and the jury and all that, that cost will be borne by you all?
For what cost?
For the accom- accommodation, you know, the thing you say you would have to do to try to get it to where it would be conducive to?
The sound and the?
Sound and all?
Yeah, I don't know. We gotta get that. We we would have to get that cost. I don't know that we have a budget that would pay for that.
We don't have a budget for ARPA.
ARPA specifically prohibited from using money for infrastructure and most equipment. That's exemplified in our government. Yeah, we would try, but under under our ARPA funds for the judiciary, they are very, very restricted, very restricted. And they do not allow for payment of those kinds of furniture fixtures for for courtroom space or for technology. They just don't allow for it. That's that's under the governor's restrictions and not allowed.
You still got your library fund, haven't you?
There there is. We would have to look and see if this would qualify for that. I'm not I'm not entirely sure without looking at that. That could, maybe. If it qualifies, then we'd let you. Right, that's right. We'd like to look at that. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
How many days a month do you anticipate?
It depends. So for example, this month, that's why I brought my, I'm still old school. I walk around with a calendar. I gotta walk around in. And I have my one upstairs. So let me, I'll just show y'all. So in our circuit, let me tell you, we cover six camps, got four of us, twelve courts plus our accountability courts. So we do for the entire circuit what we call a master calendar. So every day of the year is scheduled where our courts want to be. And and that still creates problems even in Ware, because here you got other classes, you got state court, you got four of us. You got really two functional courtrooms, right? You got the main courtroom and what they call the state courtroom. We do have a hearing room, if y'all remember, that we redid upstairs by Judge Brooks and Judge Bobby's office where that is, that's used on. Your own meeting room. Your additional days that we have to add, right? The state courtroom, you know, during COVID was just a no-go because of the spacing issue. Even now, it is it is tough for some felony criminal trials because of the compacted space. And we had, imagine some of the cases were here and there. And for example, dealing with homicides or murder cases, when you got families off in there and top one another, it's just not safe for anybody. So we have to be very careful what we can hear back there on 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 our list of criminal trials. On hearing days, we're still now in the process of trying to get that room set up for our video accomplice and stuff that we're using. It's not even, it's any big use for that yet. So you're now at one courtroom in Ware County for your felony criminal matter. So I'll show you my month of March, my court schedule, okay? And over half of this is in Ware County. Just this is me. All right, so April, this is what really brought it. So the week of April eleven, we have, I have three hearing days, two of which are major criminal days. Judge Gillis has drug court. Judge Brooks has a Ware civil week. So that's three street court judges right there, just that one week, okay? And we only got two courtrooms. I mean, we don't, we're, we're still not sure now where people are gonna go. So in addition to that, you have grand jury meeting and things like that. So, and this, this isn't just because of ARPA or adding extra days. This is just a regular, this is just a regular week for us. So we, we are in dire need of that space, but I would anticipate though at the end of the day, that, um, you know, maybe. Couple times a month, maybe, you know, it just depends on what we got, what we got scheduled. And it runs into a real issue, so particularly now with the ARPA, I'm trying for y'all to add extra criminal trial weeks. But right now you just have inmates sitting out in jail waiting to go trial, right? So every day they're out there, y'all can do that just like I can. So we're trying to add those weeks in to get those cases at least on a trial calendar and get them moved. Well, I can't, it's, it is awfully difficult to schedule extra weeks because you got all this other court going on, you know? So we got to try to move some space somewhere and what's most conducive for this building in our opinion. And that space down there is to move your most non-dangerous type stuff, which is gonna be grand jury. Unless it's a grand jury meeting, it's the DA and their witnesses, right? You don't have criminals coming in, stuff like that. And then your civil trials if need be. So Judge Brooks needed to do it, move his civil trial week that week down here. That'd be a perfect space to do it. It's just a civil trial week. You've got lawyers and litigants down there and a jury. You know, and you might need to, I think we're talking about, there might be a space across the hall so you have that full jury room to go over there. And that would clear out, that would help us clear out that space in the main courthouse to handle the felony criminal matters, the drug court. And the major hearing days that I got to try to help move your cases out of that jail, um, and get those moved. So probably answer your question though, I would maybe once or twice a month, something, something like that, I would think.
Yeah, we're willing to help because we need to reduce that out there because it costs us a lot of money to house them.
Yeah, I hear you.
We need to move them on.
That's right. I agree.
I can, I mean, I, I.
I think, Mr. Schubert, you use that room for what, your planning commission meetings?
Yes, we use it every second, Thursday's give one.
So y'all could work around that with.
Oh, yeah, well, well, we have.
We just put it to second, Thursday, month, ten to two gives it.
Right.
Okay, no, no problem.
We, we're not a coexist. We'd have to work around.
Right, but understand, I, I don't want y'all to think we're being inflexible on our days because here's the thing, when I'm not here. Man, I'm, I got five other counties we're at, right? And so do these judges, and so do the others. So it's, you can't, if you start moving one court day, now you're affecting five other counties and their court days. And, you know, these people have had this stuff scheduled for months, you know, waiting on us to show up for, for court on those days. We definitely would, would not, um, interfere with those meeting days.
Yeah, that's his room, that's, that's his room here.
Right, and that, that room's recessed back, uh, probably ten, fifteen foot. So you could actually put the metal detectors out of the main hallway.
And you can get the door.
Yeah, that's right.
And they can walk through and the judges can come through the side door because there's a side door leading into the back.
Yeah, there's one outside a stairwell right there.
Right.
So you, we wouldn't, the metal detector wouldn't be at the doors, either one of the entrance doors.
To this building.
You would set it, you would set it, say, this is the hallway.
Yeah.
You would set it in here. So they would come.
That's right.
Right there, and the hallway would be that way.
And that's the only time you use that is maybe like once a month?
We use it, uh, we use it every second, Thursday in a month from like ten to two. And, um, sometimes when we had a border zone appeals meeting, we might use it in the evening, but that's usually after hours. Um, so then, uh, we'll use it for the past. We'll let the board of elections use it during the presidential election as an overflow. For, um, another voting, a voting location.
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
You know, we, um, Ed Roser's, the attorney, his original building across the street, it, it turned into the planning commission meeting. Planning Commission's, um, office and the code enforcement. We kind of kept that hopefully to move, y'all would move drug court over there completely separate from everybody and just have one isolated building. But that didn't work out. Is, is there a reason that couldn't use it?
Judge Gillis does the drug court. I'll, I'll let him speak to that. You know, when he's talking about the building.
The code, the code department building right straight in front of the courthouse. We kind of kept it in hopes that the drug court could be moved over there. But that didn't work out and we just, last meeting sold that building. We're just wondering why that couldn't have worked out.
I didn't get to go over with them, but the program director, who is Stephanie Goddard, went over and looked at the space requirements and everything. And I really can't explain or I'm not aware of what went on with it. I know they're pretty well settled up there and we were given two additional offices that right now is holding us. That's not a long way to go. Uh, our drug court right now is housed in the courthouse and across the street. We've been great. Over in Coffee County, we're maybe a block away. It's a little across the street from our ways. Uh, that building is coming down and now we're trying to find somewhere to go for a couple of years. But they are gonna bring us back. The plan is, I hope they, I'm being told, they're gonna bring us back to the courthouse. And they still demoing them in a straight building also. Uh, that, as much as I can really probably do with this right now. I didn't get over there. I wasn't really that involved in it. I do know this, if we're holding civil hearings, uh, primarily usually in custody cases, sometimes we need somebody to go take a test. And it's just really convenient to have them go get it real quick, get the results pretty quick. But I don't in any way mean inmate that walking across the street is gonna add any big time frame. But being close in or close to the courthouse for the big factors, for the big factor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Anymore? Y'all got anything else?
I don't.
We're gonna have to table this, I guess, and, and until we find out.
Yeah, that's fine. Y'all can look. I, I do know, I'm trying to, Judge Brooks, I'm certain to speak to this. I know it will take a resolution to declare even a county-owned building as a courthouse annex. And that's for us to legally hold court. So we wouldn't have to have that, um, so that any matters, we, if we took up any matters outside of that, it could be nullified, you know, uh, later. But I, there's probably a couple different statutes that apply to that. And I, I know even they're, they made a decision between county-owned and non-county-owned. They did, their last hour of conference, some of their COVID calls, you can imagine why they grew up and they didn't have places to go and, you know, for example, even our old circuit. We, we did brand the county. We had youth community center in Hubbleton and Peters. We're still using the act center and everything, you know, so we had to do the same property for that. But that was primarily a space issue. You know, they're talking about one courthouse, which work, don't work even in, without COVID. But anyway, um.
Okay. Attorney, attorney, what kind of difference would have to be made to this resolution here?
Uh, just in this third paragraph where it has the citation, um, what Judge was talking about, we would just have to, to find the correct citation. Uh, uh, and, and replace this fifteen, six, seventeen D.
So you can come back the next meeting with a, the final, um, resolution for us to adopt that will make all this legal?
We, we can do that. Yes, sir.
When is y'all's court date planned for here?
April.
April eleventh.
We got a court all the time, you know, we, we, we really appreciate y'all's consideration. That was really a crunch week for us, um, still is. So I'm not sure what we're gonna do, but, um, I'm not, man, I'll, I'll have, I'll, I'll hold court room for a little bit, maybe. I, I'm really not, but, but it's just, it's gotta be legal and it's how it works. You gotta have, you know, security and safety for your public and, and, um. So we, we do appreciate y'all's consideration of that.
We couldn't, we go ahead and approve this thing and let him go ahead and get the resolution wherever he gets it done, you can sign it, be through with it?
Well, we also got to address the issue about the cost of trying to get this thing, you know.
Who's gonna pay for it?
Find that out too.
Redo it, I mean, fix it.
Well, so to that, I mean, the cost is gonna be the, and I, I don't mean that, I mean, two separate issues, right? Just wanted to clarify the annex, but then another thing entirely to get it set up and hold court, you know? So that's where your cost is gonna come in. Um, we can, we can certainly get that. We can look at other funds, the, the library funds if we need to. I don't know if y'all have ARPA funds. I know ours can't apply to that. Um, but, and I don't mean it to sound this way, but you know. We're kind of stuck. It's either, it's either try to maneuver around this or I'm just gonna have to not schedule so much. I don't mean this other or anything, but so much room. If I don't have the space to have it, I don't have the space to hold it, you know, so. And I'm trying to, we're trying to move your cases, but, uh, but we can probably, surely we can, we can, I would hope we can find that out. I just don't imagine this is gonna be a digging on.
The, the law library statute doesn't allow.
Right, well, that may very well make bigger answer of it.
But now it would have to be for corporate purposes.
That's right.
This has to be a courthouse annex. Can't use if this is not a annex.
That's right. That's what I'm saying. I think it's step A, step B, yeah.
Now, we do own that building right over there and I, I was asking about what, how come it couldn't be? Has anybody ever thought about that?
I have no idea.
Jerry, you know, what kind of building is that?
Warehouse.
It's just a warehouse.
Just a warehouse.
Could it be turned in and wanted and?
It probably costs two hundred thousand dollars to pick something up.
It looks pretty good on the outside.
I like a woman who lets you go on the outside, be on the inside for the key.
Well, maybe, maybe add this though, so that, you know, whatever, we can look at the building, I can look at it, but you also have to stack that with security and personnel. So right here, you're right across the courthouse from your, your existing, you know, courthouse, security, et cetera, bailiffs and those votes.
Let me ask you another question about parking.
Right.
Would they a lot be wanting to park in that area back behind this building while you have in court? Is it, is it gonna affect our parking?
They're designated parking now for court, but, um.
Is it gonna affect us?
No, because we got all this space up here.
You got all this space.
Yeah, we got plenty, but I, I know, but that back door, they're gonna all wanna park over there though.
Mostly employees park back there now anyways, so you ain't gonna have it.
We're be designated, you know, employee parking, I don't know, whatever. Yeah, I'm not sure if it's designated now, but right now most of our courthouse parking, I think is in front of the courthouse and to the side of it here now from what I get.
Probably if you require this to come to the courthouse first to go through security, so they should park over there.
Yeah, that's what I would, I would prefer to do that.
Security and parking.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I would prefer that, absolutely. Yeah, or security and parking.
All right.
Get them through there and then we can.
Bring them over here.
I think that probably be a good idea to do that.
But one thing will show, you gotta remember, if, if we're using that, that means there's two other courts at least going on, right? So most people are coming into courthouse and getting directed to where to go. But they're gonna need to do that anyway and make sure we get them back here to the right space.
Let me ask one other question for security. Do you foresee the sheriff department having to employ more people for security? If you, if we go with this annex, uh, could they do it with what they have now?
Uh, well, if you could, you, you might have some additional personnel is the question. If you were using this room down there. Because remember, if you're using this room down here other than grand jury, that, that's gonna probably presume the other, the other, your courthouse is full, right? So you could have some extra personnel, but I will say this, in the ARPA application that we did, we put in under the sheriff's department. For extra personnel to handle the extra court that we're having. So there could be a.
We did that and extra bailiffs.
And extra bailiffs, yeah. So there could be, there might, there's probably a mechanism in there to try to get, seek reimbursement for those costs through that grant.
Okay. Any more questions?
Just let the attorney attorney do his thing, y'all, and get it back to us.
You wanna, well, we can do it. It don't matter. You wanna make, just go ahead and, hey, your motion on a resolution that we take it like it is?
Everything.
Let him change it.
You want?
You wanna. George, just go ahead and do it and make a motion, go ahead and approve resolution upon his changing whatever he needs to.
I would like you to come up with a good resolution. By work, by our regular meeting, can you do that?
Say that again?
Can you, can you have this changed for our regular meeting at five o'clock?
I could probably do that.
All right. Change it. Okay, we can do it today then.
Yeah.
Get it in, get it in.
We can bring it over to the meeting.
Okay.
All right, let's just carry it over. You have it ready.
With understanding that y'all are gonna come back with cost and we'll address that.
Yeah, I think, that's right, same part of that.
This should, if we adopt this, this should get y'all going and you can make your schedule.
Right. That'll get us where we can now get, start getting, um, close to all the costs we need to register, you know, to get the items we need to set up the court.
Okay.
If the costs are gonna be borne by the law library, do you want us to come to you or not?
Nah.
I mean, that's really not your.
I just let Scott, just let Scott know what's going on. I would thank Scott and chairman, let them know and.
You're willing to let them know by way of information, but, but the actual statutory board trustees of that actual, um, fund is someone that, that has the authority spin.
Do we have this sufficient furniture for it? I mean, chairs, tables in that room? Yeah, in that room, they are, they would change probably now. They, they are enough in there?
It's a, it's a bench just like you have, um, so it sits nine. And then we have extra chairs.
We have plenty too, okay.
And the storage rooms, there, there's two storage rooms, there's chairs and others, um, I think the host there's unlocked. And, um, so we got chairs. I think there's a podium there too.
Yeah.
And the, um, I don't know if it's.
Didn't see the podium about it.
It could be, it might, it might be that reserved.
I think it's in the chair stores or maybe in the locker, I'm not sure.
We, we'll get with Scott definitely, whoever we need to get and make, I don't want her to be redundant. So we, if there's something already available, we'll definitely.
Or the record.
Okay.
Go back, those one.
Okay.
All right. Let's carry it over to the meeting.
All right, thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Carol, thank you. Let y'all know. Thank y'all for coming. Okay, B, RFP award, recreation department, athletic field maintenance. Now, we done had that, but we, what, did we get it straightened out or we're gonna go back to the? What did that be?
Scott looked at this and, um, he recommended that the first, I think, the first two. The low bid and the next bid don't meet the bid specs because of, um, experience. The third one does big, big restoration. They did it in Ware County Board of Education, um, they do a lot of big rock courses. And he recommended that. And then in the meantime, give him an opportunity to get set up to take over the spraying himself.
He said the county, we didn't have the stuff to do it with, do we? We don't have the, we don't have equipment over there.
Brandon and I went out and looked at the equipment and it's iffy right now. It needs some work and some updating. But he asked that this be approved and then give him the opportunity to get all that equipment working so they can take it over.
So who can take it over?
The, um, recreation. But Allen, we talked to Allen. He said, we don't have anybody. I've got, there's one license. I've got it. I don't know how to spray. There's nobody here who knows how to spray and get this right.
Yeah.
So that would give them time to make another, make another step because we're doing it themselves. As Scott said, this, it's in the budget for the coastal sports turf.
Okay, so coastal sports.
About thirty-one thousand.
So let me ask you this right here. So he said the first and second B didn't meet the specs.
From experience. They don't have the experience for the, um.
Story don't have larger, don't have the experience either.
Was it?
For larger.
Well, on the second one, he's been, uh, let's see. Since twenty-ten and, uh.
Yeah, but look at the, look at what they do. A lot of divvies, they do a yard.
Well, they do the rake department at Brantley County.
Yeah.
And they got, I forgot how many, I talked with the, the guy over there at the rake and say they don't have a problem with it. They do a good job, they stay on top of it and. That's what, over at, uh, like I said, I know the rest of them may have more or less like residential or the bank, but this was, uh, over in Brantley County, rake, raked over there.
Yeah, I told them the story to.
Let me check, see what kind of grass they got over there.
Yeah.
I haven't checked, see what kind of grass. I mean, I'm just pulling up what got here.
That's the big, I'm not saying they can't do it, but that, that's the big issue, the kind of turf we got.
There it is.
What they have, but I mean, that would be a, play a big role in that.
And I also talked with, uh, one at, at the Ware Board, you know, you say they do a good job, but you know, we're talking about, uh, what, ten more thousand dollars, something like that.
Where's Coastal from?
Matter.
Matter? We got, I guess a local man?
Yeah, this other man, local middle man, the local man.
I ain't, I ain't about to jump that though. I don't know, I mean, I think that'd be, you talking about a lot of money there.
Southeastern lawn program's in way across, ain't it?
Do what?
Southeastern lawn program's in way across, ain't it?
So what, the first one? Yeah, now that one, uh, what he, it's been two years. Been two years and, uh.
Well, that could work to his benefit and I would.
So what's gonna happen if we give to these lower bidders and they come back and says, well, our fertilizer prices has doubled. I can't do it for the price.
That nigga gonna double too, and he gonna raise his.
But he's already got a higher price.
It don't matter. Fertilizer raised on him here, that'll hit you with another high price.
And they can't.
No, once they sign that contract, they can't hit you with a high price.
I know you have reconstruction people that does a.
They can.
Not once it's signed.
They can.
I don't think, we got forbidden for change order for this fertilizer spraying and all that. And I mean, on roads and stuff like that, but it's fertilizer stuff, I think. I don't know if they sending latitude for change orders on that.
We got other places to buy it besides Russia.
Story twenty thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars, and he's thirty-one, one fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Lot of money difference.
Come on, welcome back.
Okay.
Put on the agenda.
Um, do I have a motion?
To put on the agenda, I moved, we put on the motion, on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll put it on there.
Do we know who the owners of these businesses are?
Stories is Jamie Storey. Jamie Storey, I know him. I, I know of him. Know his folks. Who is the owner of the, uh, first one?
Uh.
You know him?
I don't see that, what was the name in that?
Southeastern Lawn Pro?
Southeastern. Who, is that?
You know the.
Is that from the Southeastern Lawn out there?
That first one, you know the owner of that?
Is that the board it runs to? Southeastern Lawn?
No, that's, that's not them.
Southeastern Lawn Pro. I don't know. Okay. We'll carry it over to the meeting.
You say you had a motion second, I guess we need to hold on that.
All we got is a bit of an agenda.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
We just carry it over. All right. Let's carry it over to the meeting. Okay, uh, C, purchase request for air conditioning units from Work County Jail. Y'all looked at those? Train's got air, uh, I think it's, how many of them? Seven units or something?
Yeah, actually, all of them.
Just one unit, man.
I thought you said it was two, but.
No, it's about six or seven of them.
Six of them for the price of forty, forty-six thousand, one hundred seventy dollars for all of them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. I guess that's the only price we got in.
Yeah, that's from, from train.
That's not for installing them now, that, we don't have a price for installing them, yeah.
And that was one of the questions.
Installation is three thousand each, it says right there.
They asked, uh.
Yeah, I saw something about that said, that some prospect for.
They got a installation?
Installation, three thousand each.
Yeah, that's what they, they.
They just.
Can we table this to the first meeting and Scott be back where he can explain to us why they need all these air conditioners and what's going on with it?
They say that, that's the original one that was out there. I don't know if any of them are failing or whatever. And I would say that was the original one that was out there and, uh, something about these would be more efficient, uh, they would have to change out some of the copper lines, I guess, to accommodate the new freon. And, uh.
Just they ain't broke, well, we gotta fix them, change them out.
You don't, you don't want the people getting hot out there in the summertime, man.
No, we don't.
But, uh, one of the things I did wanna find out on the installation was that, you know, he said that we could use the offer funds for the air conditioning, but can we use offer funds also for the installation of them? And, uh, I think Train just gave him like, uh, he anticipates the cost of three thousand each. But we haven't even, we haven't received a contract, a proposal for any of them yet.
Well, that there three thousand dollars is not, I mean, it could be, it says, the jail maintenance supervisor has mentioned that the freon has changed and the copper will have to be replaced due to the freon change. He anticipates the cost of insulation will be approximately three thousand dollars each. So that don't mean he's got it, that ain't.
No, he haven't even gotten the proposal, he just would've guessed made that.
Yeah, he's just guesstimating there anyway. It's from a train vendor side.
Well, if it's a brand new unit, I don't understand having to change out all the copper lines and all that.
Somebody gonna have to install it. Now, you think we're, I mean, has this got to be done today? I don't know if anybody knows about that or not without asking Scott.
That's why I say table it to the next meeting.
Table it.
Okay.
Let's carry it over. We can just, I guess we'll carry it over to the meeting and we'll table it.
Do you know anything about this, Brandon?
No, sir, I'm working the, uh.
You don't?
No, I, I can go and try to do some research on it, but I would imagine it would be just like the units we just replaced over on the courthouse. Where they were purchased over the state contract and common and stuff.
Right.
And I'm assuming these are gonna be about more than three thousand dollars a unit, what their, the cost of the units of what?
What is?
For all of them, it's forty-six thousand.
They're a lot smaller units.
These are small.
Small units.
Material costs?
No, that's the.
That's the.
Train.
Complete costs.
That's the cost.
What's their equipment?
Kinda like the, I think, like a mini split system or something like that.
And there's how many units?
Six or seven, six of them, I think.
So you're saying forty-six thousand materials and twenty-one thousand in labor, that might be that's.
He's asked for a proposal, but he has, he does not have one yet from any of the installers like Conley or Jim Brown or somebody. They, they'll have to install them. But.
You got a material number on there?
So we don't know, we, we just have to carry it over. We can, uh, let's go on to the next one and then we'll come back. We'll just wait until they come in, that'd be all.
Okay.
D, the special purpose loc, local option sales tax. D, uh. We got a, we talked about this before and, um, this item is presented for discussion and possible action to officially begin the process of having a referendum placed on the ballot in November twenty-two. If the referendum passes, the collection of splash will begin in April twenty-three. Okay. We're gonna have to meet with the city too, so. We've got some. We got ninety days before election, at least thirty days after that. And let's go over here to the, uh, proposed twenty-two splash project. Is any, have you, do y'all have any questions or anything on that?
Well, here.
Got the money?
They got courthouse courtroom expansion and improvements, one point two million. But then it zeroed out under the highlighted.
Yeah.
So is that them trying, they want to annex this as to save that one point two million?
No, no, it didn't have anything to do with this. I questioned that a little bit about the sixty-two thirty-eight. Between the city and the county.
How about that split?
Population.
And I don't know if this has been since the census or not, right here.
It's based on the twenty-two census.
That's based on the census there.
Okay, okay, yeah.
That's how they've always been done. I mean, that's why it's set up to be based on population.
Okay, you got something, Brandon?
They're supposed to be coming Wednesday to look at it with Train.
Okay.
So he hadn't even had a chance to look at it yet, but he said that a guy's supposed to be coming Wednesday and he gonna get with him and go out and look at that, so we should know something.
Then they'll give us a price, somebody. I mean, they, they'll be able to price it then, the installation.
Probably in the next commission meeting, we should better have.
Probably. Okay.
Just table it to the next meeting.
Okay. Let's go on with this here then, we'll just table that. All right. Y'all got, anybody got anything else on this splash?
I guess what's.
We got one rolling off and asking for the other one.
Chairman, if I, if I may for a second, um, Scott came over this timeline and, and we looked at it and reviewed it and it, it looks good. And so essentially, the way it starts is you send a letter over to the city, ten, at least ten days before the meeting. You have the meeting and then at least thirty day, or at most, or at least thirty days after that, you would have the, uh, the, the resolution or the approving of the, of this splash. And then thir, thirty days after that, it goes to the, uh, election supervisor. Um, and so that's kinda the timeline it goes, and then you have the referendum in November. Uh, so kinda the, the drop dead date is the end of June to start it all, but earlier, earlier the better in my opinion. And I was just looking at the, um, agenda item and he does, he mentioned that, that, uh, the county commission needs to appoint two members of the commission to serve on this splash committee. Um, and so if, if you need, if you want to take any action today, I thi, I believe that is the only thing.
Yeah. I guess all we can do today is to, uh, try to get two to serve on the board.
About correct, yes.
Because when, when would be the deadline in what month?
July.
At the end of June.
July.
But, but I, I know Scott wanted it at least by the end of May.
May, okay. Won't be able to, okay, by the end of May. We need to appoint.
He says the committee, uh, will be used to, to formulate the county projects and the budget, uh, which would then be approved by the, by this full board.
Okay.
And, um, Commissioner Barner and I were having lunch today. We got a text from Mr. Boyd. Can you make sure the commission wants to move forward on the splash with a committee of two from the commission? And that's in line with.
What'd you say?
The attorneys. And all of this will be done later after the committee put together.
Okay. We'll just carry it over then to the meeting. Make that appointment to work out a division of family and children service. Who's on point?
Chairman, they asked to, um, appoint, um.
The happiness issues?
Patrick Simmons.
Yeah.
They talked to him and he's agreed to serve.
Sound good to me.
I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, and we had, um, someone else that we talked about, you know, being, uh, on there, but then when we talked with Ms. Wyndham, Ms. Booker.
Linda Booker.
Booker, she explained what, the makeup for the board, why they needed a male on there. And so I don't have a problem with Patrick being there.
Okay, who?
He's getting, Patrick's getting busy, ain't he?
Yeah, Patrick Simmons.
He getting busy, ain't he?
Yeah, he's the tourism director over at the city right now.
Okay.
And, um, I think he's agreed to serve.
Yeah, he has.
Yeah.
He said he'd do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Let's get that one over there. Okay, any commission items? I don't. County manager items? Adjourn, I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Go movement, chairman?
Second.
Add a motion that a second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Okay, meeting adjourned.
Call the uh.
On any of the items? So let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Uh.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair vote, uh. All right. We're gonna go to the agenda item now. The resolution for the twenty twenty-two oh six, that designation of the courthouse annex. Now. Have you got that resolution?
Yes, sir.
Prove? You corrected it?
I changed it. You know, we have a draft version here, so um I don't have the clean paper copy in front of me, but we can make that work. Um but but yes, I.
I'd like to see it. Do y'all need to see it?
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
I'll give y'all mind if I read it. My handwriting is not so good.
Could you make a copy of it? I mean.
Yeah, if 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 we have a printer, we have it ready.
Pretty sure somewhere in this big nice facility, we gotta print it somewhere.
Yeah, we have the uh, if we. Could you have us a printed copy of it, please?
I think the ladies, one of the ladies right over there can get it.
Damn this other. Okay.
Can we move on to another?
Yeah, all right. All right, let's go on to the next, and we'll come back on that one. RFP award Recreation Department Athletic Field Maintenance. Uh, we got three con- three bids came in. We say the first one doesn't qualify, but there's a question on the second one. There's a lot of money on the second one. I hear a motion that we accept.
Why did the first one qualify? He was too low?
He's uh. His uh, I don't. He he doesn't have the experience, I said. Is that what it is? No experience?
I think his uh. References are just mainly like city electric, D N O A cross, Work County Board of Commissioners. He don't have any experience, so.
He don't have the.
Where's he?
References.
Wasn't be as boat of commissioners.
He does the long drive around the courthouse.
He does the courthouse, he good enough to do that, eh?
They don't have any kind of spraying.
We're not gonna accept his bid, then we're gonna get, we're, I hear motion to go to the second one.
Ms. Chairman, uh, so you haven't gotten a motion on, I mean, haven't gotten?
I hadn't gotten a motion.
Cause I I just like, I guess whenever we get to the discussion phase, I wanna discuss a couple things.
If we have a motion to move on the second one? You can't get a motion on the second one, so we have to go to the third one.
I don't think the third one lives here.
Coastal Sport Turf have a motion to accept him.
Chair, I move, we accept the RFP from Coastal Sports Turf for spraying fields that Trim and Earth Complex has presented.
Got a second?
I second it.
Any discussion?
Yes, I like, that's for a discussion, uh, and we've batted this back in two, and uh, we got direct, direct, uh, and I'm direct, direct to here now. And I think I asked you this question last time, Mr. Allison, if you don't mind. Okay. Prior to now, have we ever contracted this out out there? Jerry, I think you've been here probably long in it. Have we ever contracted this out for the spraying out there?
In the past.
Yes.
Yeah, have we ever done it?
Yes, in the past, yeah.
Who did it?
Uh, this, I don't, I don't know, I don't know. I know that it was.
But y'all know this guy here, and he's from where at? He's from Madder. Madder, Georgia.
Okay, I guess what I'm trying to find out is. My understanding that you all have. The equipment out there, and you also have fertilizing, that you all have been doing it, I guess, for a number of years yourselves out there, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so. And right now you have someone on staff that I guess is licensed to where they can do it?
Yes, the maintenance supervisor needs license.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to find out is. If we got the equipment, and we got the personnel out there that can do it, then. Why why can't we continue doing it that way? Is there a reason why?
I would say at this time, uh, Mr. Commissioner, that our maintenance staff is very low. They have three workers and one supervisor. They have two uh, vacancies in there, and at this time, it'd take a lot of manpower for that.
So in other words, this individual that's doing it would have. Have to be doing like double duty or more than's kind of, time will be allotted to that where you couldn't do?
At this time, yes. It'll be primarily focused on on the field. Fields hadn't been sprayed since two thousand nineteen. Uh, I believe that was when the last company came in to spray.
So it was a company?
Irrigation system went out.
The irrigation system went out, plus?
Two thousand nineteen, that's when the last company came in.
This company also has an irrigation um, person who will go through the system and get it all working, cause it doesn't work now most of the.
You talking about this uh. One that, the third bidder?
Right.
So they gonna do that included in that price?
Yeah, he's gonna go through and see what needs and make adjustments and place heads and whatever, whatever it takes. But the maintenance supervisor told um, Brandon and I that he's the only one with a license, he doesn't have time, doesn't really know how to do it right. They don't have the people, as Lance said, they just don't have people to do it. And it'll take probably, everybody I've talked to, two to three years to get them back where they were in twenty nineteen.
The cost.
Cost of the dock. And equipment is not a hundred percent. Some of the tractor doesn't work, um. There's a sprayer that needs some adjusting on it, um, just odds and ends, but they just don't have people.
Okay, and these were the only three, uh, we Scott, well see, that's the only three bidders we could get for this.
I do not know, that's. That's all I I perceive was the third.
I knew that's the only bidders.
Apparently, there's just not many that does this who are set up for the large areas. This company does work for the Board of Education, Work County Board of Education. Oh, sorry.
Dublin Lawrence County Recreation Department, McIntosh County, Evans County Recreation Department.
Let's say to me, this is the best value for the money.
I would say that the junior, he he graduated from the county high school, played baseball. I'm not sure he actually lived in the county now.
The one? The one that had the company in Madder?
Yes, it was Coastal Sports Turf.
Okay.
Have a representative who used to live here.
So, and the reason on the first two, I think it was mentioned about uh, maybe experience. Which I know the first one didn't have any uh, I guess, commercial application as far as, you know, I would consider commercial, he most of residential, but. The second one did have uh. A reference as far as the uh. Doing the same type of work over at Brantley County.
That's what he says.
Your Brantley County Rec Department. And uh, then you know, you have the third one, like I say, I know they, I talked with the guy at the school system out there too, and they use them. And uh. So I guess if we gonna have to get someone, then I guess it'd be between these two and, you know, uh. Some little big difference in the price. And uh, I would just think it's about the the second one, you know, I mean, you start talking about doing the same thing, you know? But like I said, that's just my little one twentieth of the vote on this commission.
Well, the second one didn't say anything about fixing the sprinkler system or anything like that, did it?
Were were they asked to?
They wanted the bid.
That was that in the bid?
To go through and get the sprinkler system worked.
Was that was in the bid? Was that in the bid? I mean, in the uh.
It was not in the spec.
In the specification?
Not in the spec.
It wasn't?
So they go.
They recognized you gotta have water if you're fertilizing, so the sprinkler system needs to work.
So.
But it was not in the specs.
Well, then we'd be wrong if we took them, and he's the only one that knew about it, and the other ones didn't know he's supposed to do that.
We'll go through the system and see what it takes to get it working and get it working, and that was just a.
So they gonna do it, I guess, to use.
Is the system working?
They gonna do it pro bono?
It is working?
The system is working. We have one control panel on the adult side that is not fully functioning as it should. So we're actually taking that control panel off, we're still under warranty, they said it back.
Okay.
But all the systems are working.
So.
Yeah, forget about the sprinkler system. I never mentioned that. I never said a word.
If you didn't tell them all, then you you'd be wrong by accepting him, and the rest didn't know that they're supposed to do that.
No, they're not supposed to do it.
Okay.
It was not in the specs.
Okay. Got it. All right.
And.
Do you ha- do you know any of these contractors? Have you ever worked them before?
I have spoken with uh, Coastal, Mr. Trippnords, um, over the road a couple times. And uh, he said we can be, and guy, say that he can get it turned around over at our facility. Pretty much assured that we can get our system out of park back to where it once was. I have not spoken to other two uh, companies. Uh, I'd be interested in uh, Tripp, no.
Are you? I don't wanna put you on the spot, but are you comfortable with with uh. Coastal?
I'm comfortable with Coastal. Um. I'm a football referee. I go to different schools. I've been to some of those schools. I go to Brantley County. Look at that turf. It's wonderful turf. It's, so both companies that they're they're better.
Okay. Story landscaping, are you?
Stories, yes, I.
Are you ca- uh, comfortable with him?
I I'm comfortable with what I've seen at Brantley County.
Okay.
What I see at Work County is, it's nice as well, so.
Okay.
Both both companies are good companies.
Both of those are.
From what I've seen, it's good, that I've been to.
Okay.
And like I said, we bid, so I guess I know you some talking about rebidding it again, because that's we, these are the three we have.
We got a motion on the floor.
We got a motion for the third one, but we we in discussion, so.
Yeah, I was just asking the question, you know.
Yeah.
Probably not. I wouldn't think you would.
Okay.
I think I would think you would not.
All right. All right, we got a motion in a second. Let's vote on it.
Voting on which one?
Well, on the motion, motion, take the third one.
Now, I I have one question on that. I play devil's advocate here. This thing gives us a month by month, and it's got February labeled on both of them, and that's forty, that's five thousand seventy-five dollars total. February's done come and gone. So do we still pay that five thousand seventy-five dollars, or does that come off the thirty-one thousand?
So during the entire process, uh, we have to pre and post the merge, so the whole process has to has to take place, and so. At the beginning, where it's February, if we approve it, like, that day we actually move up to April, man. I talked to Coastal today. He was waiting on some uh, chemicals to come in to get started.
Okay.
I think Scott has hired them to do the February under his um. Under his authority to do a one-shot deal until this could be worked out.
Okay.
Spray one time for February and. Go from there.
Just waiting on the chemicals to come in. He should spray Tuesday.
I'm good.
Okay. Any more discussion? Not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
No.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair gonna vote no. Okay, go to the next. A purchase request for the unit, the work in his jail. Now, if we was gonna table that or until we find out more about that. We decided to table that.
Yes.
Okay, to the next, next. Uh, we're gonna table that one. Let's go to D. Twenty-two special purpose local option sales tax.
Well, we need a.
We're gonna probably table that one, huh?
Well, we need a motion on that to table.
The table.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Excuse me. We need a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair, that we tabled uh. The uh, person of the H B A C units for the Work County Jail.
Okay, I have a motion to table that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Barnard?
Aye.
Chair vote, uh. All right, now the. Air conditioning unit, C.
That's one we just did.
That's that's right. I'm behind one. Okay, the twenty twenty-two purpose local option sales tax. Uh. We discussed that, but what? This, we got time for this happen, but we didn't. We can. We need to make a motion to table.
Table this thing till the next meeting, till we can get our county manager back to explain some things to us.
Yeah, let's uh, okay, do I have a motion to table this? I just made it. Okay, second.
So I got.
Any discussion? Ain't got none. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair vote, aye. All right. Appointment to the Work County Division of Family and Children Services. Now.
Chairman, I move, we appoint Mr. Patrick Simmons to that um. As representative of the county to the Family and Children Services on board. He has agreed to serve.
Okay, I second that motion.
Got a second. Okay, any discussion?
Just like to say that uh, Mr. Franklin Pinn, I believe he was the one that was serving on that board, and unfortunately passed, he wants back. And uh, so that's why they pick seeking another, you know, male person to be on that board, and uh, I think Patrick Simmons will be a great fit for it, and.
Okay.
He's agreed to serve it, Mr. Commissioner Pope alluded to that.
Okay.
He couldn't be guilty.
Any more?
I think they got the right one for the job.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
I second it.
Well, he seconded.
Okay. Let's go, Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair vote, aye. Okay. Before we adjourn, we wanna go in a. Executive session.
Let's revisit the resolution first.
Oh, yeah, that resolution, okay, excuse me. Let's go back to the resolution he has approved. Mr. Burson wants to look at it. You got us all a copy of it. Okay. What was changed on that thing? Does that?
We changed that third whereas paragraph and the their last paragraph.
You tell me that again now.
We changed the the third whereas paragraph, and then that last uh, now therefore bit result paragraph.
Okay.
Let's see, give me just a minute.
If we execute it tonight, we'll probably need to change the uh, Scott from attesting to it.
Okay.
So they're not. Chairman, could we ask the attorney to explain exactly what we're doing for the record?
The change in this resolution from the last one?
Yeah, why did the, why they were, why the judges requested this, and what we're doing, what our response?
So so the judges were explaining their overbook for the main courthouse, that, you know, sometimes. Multiple judges are assigned to only two courtrooms, and so they would use this as kind of the overflow courtroom, uh, and a, and one room here as a, as a. Excuse me, as an overflow courthouse with the one room being the the extra courtroom, um, whenever they need it. Uh, they explained that they would work with James and uh, his department, who who uses that room on Thursdays. Uh, the reason we revised the resolution is just because it was a a version that cited a a. A statute that, or a subsection of a statute that wasn't exactly applicable here. So all we we're changing now is we're saying it's in the best interest of the county, uh, to hold Superior Court here. Um, and whenever they need this as overflow courthouse, they they have it available.
Now, just this one, the one room downstairs, not the entire building?
Uh, we have. Uh, we have just designated the address as the courthouse annex. If we want to do it narrower, we'll have to figure out, you know, the designation, you know, how do we designate that room and then also whether we can have a, you know, a courtroom annex as opposed to a courthouse annex. But, uh, as written, it would be just this address, three oh five Oak Street.
Okay. Let me ask a question here. I just, okay, if that room, uh, Jim, does it have like a a name up there on it or like planning and code room or something like that?
I think it just has a number.
So could we upwards designate a certain room because when you say three oh five Oak Street, administrative building, you know, and help me out here, that's saying this whole building. And so then you start getting into to the minutia about which room is, whereas if we could designate a certain room, you know.
That's right.
It'd be some different, uh.
That's how we're addressed, it's different suites.
That's what I'm saying, does that have like a suite number?
It has a number as well.
Okay. I think that, I think that needs to be.
I would like it better to have a a suite being located for their courtroom instead of the entire building.
Sure. We, I don't know that number, do you, James?
No, I can remember that number.
Yeah, that's easy, you know, I mean, we.
Okay.
Yeah, probably needs to be better described as where what what we letting them have, you know, I guess.
Well, we're not really letting them have it, we're letting them use it to catch up, but.
Are they going to pay rent on it or?
He mentioned the grand jury.
They're free.
A grand jury room, is that the same room?
You might have lost me on that, so do we want to designate that room?
That's up to y'all.
Well, he said that they would use it.
Grand jury, don't be honest, just don't even.
Said they could use that as the grand jury.
Then they could use it, yeah. But if we get into putting this whole building as a courthouse annex, then we're going to start having other visitors come over here claiming.
They get to put the door, or yeah, they want this whole building.
We'll be holding sessions out back on the sidewalk.
Is this, is this got a a time limit on it? I mean, like a a a date to start, a date to stop?
No, not not.
When would it go?
Start today and then, uh, you would do another resolution to to end it.
Would have to have another resolution, this can't be like for two years or?
They don't know how long it's going to be. We don't know, you know, how long.
He said not over three.
Well, that's that's why I posed the question as to how long, you know.
Well, we can put that three-year stipulation in there if you want to, but.
And, uh, cause you know.
If they're not done with it, then we could extend it.
It's kind of like anything else, once they get kind of get comfortable with it, they might say, well, hey, you know, we just going to keep this going, you know, and but really they don't maybe need to, you know, but like I said, we want to try to accommodate and understand. It's helping us basically on a way too because getting those cases out of there because right now we having to pay every day someone is out there when really they, if they had to trial or whatever, you know, can move on.
Also, it shows the general public, one reason we built a building like we did, in case we did need a room with it.
Now, my also in the wording here.
Do you think we need to put a date on it?
Mr. Attorney.
When we, when we.
In the wording here. Do we need to have this addressed as just for the Superior Court judges or any judge?
Uh, it it's only the Superior Court judge, um, at the, uh, the third paragraph. It 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 says it holds Superior Court sessions. And we can, you know, add that as long if you want to, too.
Let me ask another thing, what's your name again?
Nick Kinsley.
Nick, Nick, okay. On that last, you know, but not therefore be resolved, when you went through, uh, stating the statute, but then the one or more, one or more of the judges of Superior Court must hold session, uh, Superior Court in each county site not less than twice a year. And I, you left that out, was there a reason why?
That's part of the difference statutes, um, that's under that fifteen six seventeen B, that would be the language. The language in this new one is is that, uh, the best interest of the county.
Okay, just say hereby designated as a courthouse annex pursuant to Fisher Georgia Code and it's, uh, fifteen six dash eighteen.
Yes, sir, and and there's rules it within that statute of of, you know, how you can deal with it. Uh, basically, you're using it as an overflow cor- courtroom.
Okay. So you say that had a number on that room that they talking about?
It's 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 one thirteen, but what, I don't know if it was real clear was if like a jury deliberation room or whatever, I don't know if somebody used a meeting room across the hall. This meeting room, I'm not sure what they what they wanted there.
They imply they might possibly run in situations that have to use more than one room, so.
Yeah, to my.
Do you designate one one room or just courthouse and then adjust as you go along? That's, can you legally say?
You have to do the second option if if they may or may not, you know, use the two rooms like they said.
So, yeah, when they were talking about using two rooms, they were talking about for like the jury, if they had to, so, you know, have the jury to go out or having two rooms to have the court themselves in.
I just don't know what, because that that room across the hall is actually shared by the Board of Assessors and the Tax Commission. I'm not sure how often this is used. Something we might give a choice of our own.
I would rather, you know, myself, if if we do this, and I hope that we can accommodate, that we going try to cover all the bases now, rather than having to come back, say, now we got to do a resolution to use this room over here for the jury and then come back and but and just try to do it all at one time.
Aren't there a small room that comes off of that big room?
What's that?
Is it there a smaller room that comes off the big room? Down there in the bunk.
No, the room on the side is his office.
There's a a storage room, chair storage room in the hallways, outside the hallway.
How big is that room?
Uh, they're they're probably, uh, ten twelve, yeah, I'd say they're eight or ten, not that big.
What's in them? Anything in?
If they want to put a jury in there, well, people, I mean, they're playing the room with this one chair.
It'd be big enough for a jury room.
They have to, if they if they did a jury trial and they needed them to go somewhere, that's a room they could use. They put them everywhere, nothing in that room.
Well, see, there was a question about that soundproof too, is that, is those those walls are not soundproof, are they? They they probably wouldn't qualify for it. Hey, the old jury rooms over here, courthouse sure ain't soundproof. One of them in the courthouse, is it? No.
No, they're not, either.
You can hear all the way through that way, you have to set up a mini of that.
No, 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 none of them rooms in there, they should question you too, like that.
Jonathan, do them rooms have numbers on the door?
They do.
We just.
All rooms have numbers.
Can we just apply them two rooms with that room?
The one room on the right is chair is chair stores and I guess you was the one on the left.
We designate one of them rooms for in case they need it for jury room, I added on here.
Or do both of them?
I have a question to the attorneys. If this was designated, uh, courthouse annex, could these concerns be taken care of and covered in a memorandum of understanding with the court? Between the county commission and the court?
Sure, or, you know, and we can always revise the resolution if we need to.
I suggest we look at it that way, be it legal, because I think they're they're kind of up in air on what exactly what they going to do at this point.
When's our next meeting, uh, because they were talking about the week of April eleven, but I think that's our next meet, uh, or y'all's next meeting, right?
Yeah, they prepared, they want to go and get everything scheduled.
They'll be holding court by the time we had a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we still got to dress that thing about the cost of all that tomorrow.
I know.
And all that stuff.
See, that ain't been said, nothing about the cost.
That would happen either. Um, that, I I'm happy with them down there because of audio or portion of our court report. And, uh, there's, uh, a couple of things that they need to do, uh, and once the commission decides to let them view that room, then there'll be equipment that will have to be bought put in there for that court recorder and that and that won't happen in two weeks. It it'll take a little while, as you all know, that's hard to get, especially electronic components. Uh, so it may be more than two weeks, it could be, it could be a month, we can get everything in there.
Who's going to pay for that? Who's going to pay for that? Are we got to pay for it? Well, they said.
That's what they were doing.
Come out, I, if they got the library fund, I mean, it'll come out here.
But, yeah, they be up to them to decide, it's like, would you use our library fund to do this?
Not going to cost us anything here.
No, I didn't say.
They they got a pretty good bit of money in that library.
Well, I sit on that committee, you know, so I'm a no for it.
You sit on the on the library?
We did look at this whole room.
Say it, tell them about it.
There's one, that's the meeting, that's a chair room.
Right.
That chair could be moved out of, if they needed to separate or even whatever, they could set them in there.
Okay, do they need to have both rooms, you think?
I would say yes, absolutely.
I would say yes.
Probably need more than two rooms, because if you ever have to separate.
The big room and the two small rooms.
Sometimes you got to separate them attorneys, too.
There's also a public info security room that's a little bigger, I believe.
That would be a room that we looked at that don't have these back here.
This is twelve by fifteen.
That's a pretty good sized room.
I'm I'm just, my main concern is is putting this whole building as a courthouse annex. I don't want to do our entire building as a courthouse annex.
I agree.
No, they're.
Exactly.
I mean, this is this bill was put here for a certain purpose and I just don't want to take away from that purpose.
Those rooms are one eleven, one twelve, one thirteen, one fourteen.
Okay.
Why don't we just put them rooms?
Set them on the on the resolution.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, one eleven, one twelve, one thirteen, one fourteen.
That's, uh.
Can you do that, Tom?
Two chair rooms and a public info security room.
And then we we talked about a date, did we want to add a date in there, uh, end date?
Uh, ending date?
Yes.
We need to, in the, uh, motion, it needs to be for the amount, the rooms and through, what's this, twenty?
I would say three years because that's what he said was two, two, three.
Three years and then?
If we need to do it, redo it three years, we'll redo it three years. But I'd give them that extra time instead of having to come back and do this a sec, you know, after two years it'll not be done.
Okay.
So I would give them the whole three.
I hear a motion that we do that then.
I make a motion, business.
All right, read it off like you want it, just go.
I make a motion that we.
Two, three.
Allow them to room, uh.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, be used as a courtroom annex.
Okay.
And the three with a three-year stipulation, and they can use it for three years.
Okay.
So do we want to go put a date on like what from three years from this time or?
April.
March twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five, is what we get by, yeah.
And it'll end, okay. All right, I have a second on that, I got a motion.
I'll second that.
I got a second. Now, any discussion on?
Does that?
Would this be click, is that approving this resolution pending those changes that we, y'all just made the motion?
Right, it's approving this this resolution with with these changes, Steve.
So that would meet the legal requirements of designating a courthouse annex, what, the motion, that motion?
By resolution, yeah, that's how, we got to do a resolution.
Okay.
And I'll I'll another, I'll add in the the one or more judges, I'll add that back in too as well.
Thank you, okay. All right. We have a motion and a second.
Hold on just a minute, we need to put in there that the Ware County Board of Commissioners is still, how do I need to say this? Board of Commissioners had the final say-so, you know,
of the, uh,
the schedule, but he made a comment, you know, they could work around if James has a meeting or something, you know, that they could work around, you know, his schedule. Didn't he say that, James?
Yeah, he said that they could work around that, I tried, I heard him say that.
So I guess that's something that they would need to try to correlate with him, you know, uh, as far as the timing, just like if you got a hearing schedule or something like that.
And also, it shall be used for court only, not letting, say, a member, she's over the courtroom now over here and she's wanting, if somebody wants to use a court, they had to go through her to get permission to use it.
So you're saying the county commission controls the use of annex and the clerk of court controls courthouse?
Correct.
I'll agree with that.
Okay. That make sense, Nick?
Not not exactly. We got me out of the bit.
Yes.
All right, Board of County Commissioners will be the sole. Somebody help me out.
Responsible entity for saying who can use what here. Instead of when we let the Superior Court come over here, instead of letting their Superior Court clerk come over here and say, well, John Doe or Mary Jane can use these facilities on this date, she don't have the authority to do that over here, only us.
Right. I'm I'm just trying to think there's, you know, because there's state law about who controls the courthouse, like for example, that that we talked about the sheriff would be in charge of security. Uh, and so that may already be the 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 governing authority, may have that.
Well, we can just have it changed, it will be used for court only.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing else, just court only, no Democrat or Republican parties, conventions or anything like that.
Court sessions.
Only, court sessions only, that should cover it. I had any more to it?
Only thing we got to deal with is the cost factor, once we agree to all this here, but then next thing going to come up is when it start getting the cost, but you say the law library, they can get the funds from there, but that's really not our, you know.
Murder clerk of court, one that controls the law library funds.
Yeah, but if you put it there for that annex, that just applies to them, I can still use it, all right?
Yeah.
We we, I think what I have in there about that metal detector and all that, we don't need it at the end, let them come through the courthouse like he said, and then they send them over here.
And they'll be at the back door when they come up?
Back door, they go on them there with with a wand or something, but we don't need one of them things set up in here.
Everything they put a metal tech in, it should be a room set at that where you wouldn't repeat any traffic.
Right.
Some tax commission's office, board of assessors, or laws.
Well, my thing is, and you know this, Jimbo, excuse me, chief, you know this, chief, when somebody shies away from a metal detector, shying away for a reason. I mean, you know, so that hone in on that, but.
The only other problem they have is.
Yeah, but they get him tote the pocket knife or nothing else, you know.
It's a handicap accessible, handicap accessibility got some.
At the front, right, and that might be an issue there, too.
Yeah.
Because every entry door that we have the public allow the public to use has to have wheelchair accessibility.
Yeah. That's, is it?
I thought that was supposed to be done, but I don't know what happened.
What, one put back there?
Yeah, Mr. Cat or.
Oh, yeah, does it have handicap?
We do out here, but we don't have a ramp.
They don't have a ramp. I see that.
You got a ramp.
That have to be done, too.
We got one out here.
Yeah. We got a ramp at the back door there, we don't have one here.
Make it all.
If they would have put one in the back door. Because they did do some work out there, that's right, they had to put a handicap there.
Okay. All right, let's vote on it. Any more discussion on it before we vote? Mr. Burson?
Uh.
Mr. Pope?
Uh.
Mr. Lucas?
Uh.
Mr. Byrne?
Uh.
Chair votes, uh. Okay, we got it. Let's go, uh. I want to get a motion to have a, go in executive session personnel.
I'll say.
I'll say.
Say.
Who made the motion?
You made a motion.
Yeah.
Chair, I'll second it.
Second it.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Uh.
Let's go in and then we'll close the meeting. Let's go in there, we're closing, people.
Okay.